All right, let's go to number three. Does anybody want a break before we go to number three, or we want to keep plowing?
No, let's keep plugging away.
All righty.
We've got a lot to get through.
Yes, we do. Only nineteen in new business. An ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property within the city limits. The city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the year 2015 fixing the rate thereof at 2.3 mils for general fund operations, .4 mils for fireman's pension and relief fund, .4 mils for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and 1.0 mil for the federal public library and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Lieutenant.
No.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes. An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the year 2015 fixing the rate thereof at 2.3 mils for the general fund operations, .4 mils for the fire pension and relief fund, .4 mils for the police pension and relief fund, and 1 mil for the Fayetteville Public Library and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County.
Paul.
Mayor, as we've discussed before, this is requesting that the council pass a levy of 4.1 mils for 2016, .4 mils for the old fire pension, .4 mils for the old police pension, 1 mil for the library, and 2.3 mils for the general fund. This represents a 1 mil increase for the general fund, as we have discussed before. I did a presentation on September 8th. We heard from the police and fire chief on September 15 about the need for additional personnel. Again, as we look at the general fund budget, I'm forecasting or recommending a $3 million increase between last year's budget and this year's budget. Key reason for that increase is approximately $1.5 million to add 23 currently unfunded positions to the payroll in 2016. Nineteen of those positions would be for police and fire, 11 for fire, 8 for the police, plus four other positions. In addition to that, in next year's budget, we need additional funds to pay the salary increases that you approved this year during the first quarter to all general fund and other employees or other personnel in the city. In addition to that, we have insurance increases, we have additional pension increases, we have $100,000 in next year's budget for a salary survey, and I think we need that very desperately to make sure that we're competitive in the market because it's very, very costly for turnover. So the key increase is additional of 23 currently unfunded positions, plus other additional costs which are generally personnel-related, and this would require some type of ongoing funding stream to fund those in the future. Remember, this budget increase we talked about of $3 million, from $38.1 million to in excess of $41 million, does not include salary plan. Salary plan that traditionally is brought to you by the mayor next, at the end of the first quarter next year in 2016, now again is something we'd have to look at funding. So that is the reason we're requesting a 1 mil increase in the general fund levy for next year. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I believe you have an amendment or two, don't you, John?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer one amendment.
Okay.
My one amendment is this: The finance director will calculate the additional tax revenue raised by the millage increase set forth in this ordinance on an annual basis and report the same to the city council. This amount should be added incrementally to the budgeted amounts for police and fire departments in fiscal year 2016 and beyond, and not diverted to other budget uses or functions. What we're doing here, and I'd urge my colleagues to give me a second, let's discuss it.
Is there a second on the issue?
It looked like the city attorney had something material to add if I read his body language right.
I don't want to get in the way of the council if...
Alan, there's been a motion to amend. Were you in here when?
I could hear.
Okay.
There, I will point out, there are some problems with your proposed amendment from just a legal point of view. For example, when you talk about it must be budgeted for the police in the future and thereafter, this city council cannot bind the hands of any future city council on what they're going to use the general operating millage for. You can't do it. It has to be enacted every year. The budget's enacted every year, and so this city council cannot tie the hands of future city councils. The other thing that I have done throughout my career as city attorney is try to make sure that the various branches of government do not step on each other's toes, so that the mayor doesn't step on your toes, but on the other hand, you don't place directives to city staff because the mayor's the chief executive officer and everybody must answer to him. This amendment seems to try to direct the finance director to do certain things, and I have consistently through many years tried to prevent city council from doing that, and also tried to prevent the mayor from sometimes impeding or encroaching upon the city council's prerogatives. You know, it's, there's a tension always, not only here, but in the state and also at the national level where congress and the president don't always stick with their own boundaries, but in our separation of powers position. But I think that this is one where certainly a request can be made to the mayor by the council, and that has happened in the past. But when there's been a proposal in the past that would direct the mayor or try to, or direct a director, a finance director or other person by the council, I've always said that I believe that probably is beyond the power of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
Point of order, we're discussing an amendment that has not received a second.
Yeah.
I mean, let's, let's...
Okay, John.
Sure.
I think you bring up a good point.
Okay.
Now, I will ask the council, is there a second to the amendment?
That sounds like no to me, Mayor.
Okay, there is no second to the amendment, so the amendment stays.
Well, I apologize for commenting on that before there's a second.
All right. John, you have a number two here?
No, well, I'm not going to make the number two. That was pointed out that this has to be reauthorized.
Every year, you look at it every year.
Every year, right, exactly.
And you decide whether to do it.
And what I'm trying to do with this amendment, just for the public at large, is we're selling this as a tax increase to fund police and fire. I'm just trying to get the council to commit to that's really what it's going to be spent on. One of our, one of my colleagues pointed out, and rightfully so, it would be a very politically dangerous saying to use a bait-and-switch technique here, where we say we're going to use it for police and fire, then as soon as we get the tax passed, we fund something else, some little pet project. And we would do so at our political peril, I agree. But humans have short memories, as the polls have shown us time and time again, and a year or two down the road, this tax increase goes into the general fund, and it may or may not be spent on police and fire, as it was originally pitched to us. But because our memories are so short, we won't recall it. I was just trying to ensure that the police and fire that we're trying to fund here are really the ones that get the money. I'm a little skeptical as to whether or not that money in the general fund will actually, or anyone will even care, you know, two, three years down the road. Initially, I expect the money to go to police and fire, but after the first year or two and the hullabaloo's all over, then we get back to business as normal, that money's available for whatever project we want, and I'm concerned about that.
Let's see. Paul, you want to? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
Well, and just to borrow some words from Alderman Latour earlier, good fire and police protection are part of the reason that Fayetteville grows. And with Fayetteville growing, I seriously doubt that the need for the fire and police that we're dedicating this money to will ever go away. So I doubt that the millage would ever be used for something else, because the cost of a police force is definitely not going to decrease over time, it's only going to increase. So with Fayetteville growing, I think you were right with what you said earlier, that fire and police protection, good fire and police protection are part of the reason Fayetteville grows.
I would like to make a couple of comments if I could, Mayor. 60% of the general fund expenditures roughly are on police and fire. So I think that can show the council and the mayor's commitment to public safety. We're audited every year. Those numbers are in our annual audit on what we expend. And each and every year, we come forward to the council to discuss budgeting, I think, to attempt to tie the hands of a future council and what they may or may not decide to spend the funds on. I think that's really something that one can't be done and shouldn't be done. Each and every year, this is always revisited, and at any point in time, council can look at this, and if they feel that there is a need or not a need, they can always change the millage.
Yep.
So I guess that would be my only comments at that point in time, at this point in time. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Paul? Okay. Let's take some public comment. Who would like to be first?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name is Lorraine O'Neil, and I'm not currently a property owner, so I guess you could say I don't have a dog in this race. But I second Mr. Latour's concern, and I don't know if there is a way of stipulating that a millage increase be designated for a certain purpose, but I second his concern about that, because over the many, many years that I was a homeowner, that was one of the things that I paid close attention to with any millage increase, because it affected me directly. Not that I begrudge the city employees from getting a raise or from any of the benefits, because I, I think they do a commendable job. In just about everywhere that I've lived, I have seen nothing but good in those departments. But I do echo his concern about whether or not that it can be designated as a general, general fund revenue and appropriated for other uses than what it was originally intended. If there's any way to designate that specifically, that would be most helpful. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address this on this?
Well, I don't consider a concern about that. I think all you folks and anybody else who gets elected to this board will be supporting and keeping that in the budget in the future. I would have one question if, I think I probably listened and watched more of your meetings related to the fire and pension board than anybody else in town who isn't involved. I know a lot of firefighters and police officers. But could somebody give us a simple statement about how much this will help pension funds, not the whole long thing?
It won't, it won't do anything for the pension fund.
It's not going to increase it currently, so that's still a...
Just to put on 19 new fire and police personnel.
Okay.
Correct, Paul?
So it's still to be decided how we improve.
The pension fund's another discussion.
Pension fund. Thank you.
Mayor? Peter?
Peter Tonason, Ward 3. I'm just curious, if the city's growing and the tax base is increasing, why doesn't that, at a given millage rate, allow for the growth of the police and fire departments?
Paul, would you like to answer that?
I'll be happy to. This has been asked before, and it's certainly a good question. We have to remember that the amount of dollars that we generate from property taxes is about $1.3 million. Yes, that does in fact grow, but that doesn't grow at a fast enough rate to take care of the increases in our needs. For example, in the last, since 2006 to 2014, entire property taxes collected were about $500,000. That's how much it grew in that period. So over time, it's not a large enough percentage of the general fund. The general fund's going to be $41 million next year. 1.4, which will, is roughly the estimate, will generate from the property taxes from 1 mil is not large enough to generate enough of an increase to take care of the needs.
Who else would like to address this on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
I'd like to suspend the rules and move to second reading.
Second.
Third and final.
Third and final reading, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to suspend rules and go to third and final. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Lieutenant.
No.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, for the year 2015 fixing the rate thereof at 2.3 mils for general fund operations, .4 mils for the fireman's pension and relief fund, .4 mils for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and 1 mil for the Fayetteville Public Library and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas.
Okay. Final comments, counsel. Go ahead, John.
Well, I speak from the minority position. I tell people I'm the ranking minority member on this council, and I don't mind that. I've been controversial most of my life. For those of us, I've said this before and I'll say it again for emphasis, for those of us with good jobs, with good educations, with college degrees, with professional degrees, this tax increase won't amount to a hill of beans worth a difference. We'll pay it and just blow and go. But my heart goes out, this is an emotional argument, to that young couple who just scraped together enough funds to get a down payment for their first house, and is barely getting by, and we're increasing their tax burden. It just seems to me that we could cut out maybe a new recycle truck, or a new dump truck, or one of the fourth or fifth road grader we purchased, or something like that, to fund what we need to fund here with our city, rather than increasing taxation on our citizens. I'll admit that my default position on a tax, an increase in tax, is no. It's a presumption I have in my mind, just like a presumption of innocence in a criminal trial. We're not saying the defendant is innocent, we're just saying we're presuming he's innocent. I'm not saying I won't vote for a tax increase, I'm just saying that's my presumption, and that presumption has to be overcome. I don't think we've overcome that with our arguments here. So I'll stand by my no vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John. May I?
I think it was 2008, before I was on the council, when I was getting pretty close attention. Mayor, you were there, so, you know, I might, maybe it's 2009, you'll know better than me, but I think in 2008, the mayor at the time presented a budget that proposed raising the millage to cover the deficit. It wasn't a balanced budget. And the council was talking about rejecting it. And of course, the council's role is not to simply reject it and send it back to the mayor, bring forward a new one, they have to amend it, but it's their responsibility after it's been proposed. And if I, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was Alderman Bobby Farrell at the time, said he had a solution, they were going to close a $300,000 budget deficit by not buying a fire truck. I think it was passed, the proposal.
That would be correct.
And so the budget was balanced in that manner.
I don't know if it was him, but it was one of them, and I can't remember which one.
Well, so here's the issue. It only fixed the deficit for a year.
Right.
Because the truck still had to be purchased. Even if you never purchased it again, you still had $300,000 worth of potential deficit to cover year over year as an ongoing expense, solved by eliminating a one-time capital purchase. So, you know, I understand the questions, and they're honest to goodness, the way they are, they are rooted in an honest-to-goodness manner in concern for the way that we budget, we budget the money. But what I'm concerned about by this, these lines of suggestions, is that they're dangerously close to crossing the line into post-truth politics. It is a fact that there are only two ways to pay for these staff increases. The first is to raise taxes in exactly the manner that's being proposed. It has to be paid for general fund revenue, it's state law, we have to find general fund revenue somewhere. The first option is to raise taxes exactly as they're proposed. The second option is to find an equivalent amount elsewhere in the budget and eliminate the program. So it's our job as council to decide which option we're going to take. All we have from the mayor and his staff is a proposal. And if we want to be truthful about our options, then it's either raise taxes, or we've had two weeks now, three weeks if you count time since the agenda session, to find more than $1 million in other programs to just cut. Or we can not hire the police and fire. I guess there's a secret option three. So, you know, I, I say all this to, you know, I, a million dollars, it's a little more than that, is a lot to find in one program. And in most of our programs, if you were to spread that across, you would hamstring individual programs to the point where they wouldn't even be effective to keep around at all anymore. So my sense is, I mean, that's my reason for not bringing forward a cut. I can only presume it's the other council members' reasons for not being, bringing forward a cut. So I'm left with the conclusion that if, the only truthful conclusion is that if we need the police and fire, this is the option. And I think it's our obligation to simply be truthful about it. I think the public will agree with us if that's our approach.
Anybody? Sarah?
I would just like to point out that the average, or I'm sorry, the median home value in Fayetteville is about $160,000. So what this impact of this tax would be is a little over $30 per year. And I just have to ask myself, would I be willing to pay $30 a year to make sure that the fire department could respond to me in less than five minutes, and, or that the police would be able to respond to my home in less than five minutes? And I think the answer to that question is yes. So I will be supporting this.
Anybody else? Alan?
I'll just say that, you know, when, when your chief of police and your fire department chief both come to you and tell you that they need something, that, those are the things that you respond to first, because we've never seen that happen since I've been on the council. That's only been two and a half years, but I've followed, followed the city council for years before that. I've never seen either of those two people come to the council and ask for something to protect the citizens of Fayetteville. And they haven't asked for an increase in the number of staff positions since 2006, I believe it was. I just, not funding that seems preposterous to me for the very low cost. I know that it's a new, it's a tax increase, and no one likes tax increases, but $2.50 a month is not a large tax burden for the outcome. So I will be supporting this.
Anybody else? Yes, John?
Just five months ago, when we were discussing making a $50,000 grant to the Walton Arts Center, I brought up the fact that we had four or five unfunded and frozen positions on our police and fire department. Both chiefs appeared before us and said, "We're making it just fine without those, we'll do it with overtime, it's cheaper than hiring new people, blah, blah, blah." Five months later, when we want a tax increase, they come back and tell us, "Oh, we need this, we need this." It looks a little bit manufactured, this need to accommodate this tax increase. That's why I'm skeptical, that's why I offered the amendment, to guarantee that the money would go to what we're saying it's going to. I would feel better if we had a strong voice of commitment, even it looks like we're going to pass this tax overwhelmingly. So I'd love to hear my fellow colleagues on this council say, "I'm firmly committed to making sure this money goes to fire and police." I haven't heard that yet. I hope I do.
Well, there'd be an easy way to track it, if we put on 19 fire and policemen, then you know it's going to be going toward fire and police. If we don't, then you can come back and say you didn't put them on, Mayor, and we're going to hold you responsible. How about that, John?
That's pretty reasonable. I'd still like to hear it verbalized.
I just said.
Okay, well, what else?
Mayor, I just want to clear a fact for the public watching this. Last year in the budget discussions in October, Alderman Long presented a request for a ninth beat to the city. And at that time, we did have both chiefs come forward and talk about the fact that we thought that we could continue it at the current levels, however we were seeing a trend. But three months or six months don't make a trend.
Right.
That we wanted to see more time before we actually went to the citizens to ask for increases from their own pocketbooks, simply because we've been doing it through cuts. So I would say that option one has been looked at in terms of cutting programs or not scaling programs up since the very first discussion of this. We're now in the 13th additional month from the first discussion of this information, and we have 13 more months of upward trend brought to us by our chiefs. And so the commitment that was made to the council by the mayor and me as the chief of staff, and Paul Becker as the finance director, and Chief Taber and Chief Dayringer, was that when we believed that there would be a need, we would bring that need immediately to keep our word to the council as a part of that 2015 budget discussion. So the other item we talked about is that the council would need to do policy discussion, changes in funding from the funds that we pay some of these other areas from. If we want to talk about the Walton Arts Center, it's parking fund revenues controlled by the council where those funds go, which today are limited to parking. And so that wasn't a viable option for funding at the time, or now, until someone brings that forward as a discussion, which has not been done by the administration and would need to come from the council. So I just want to make those points clear, because we don't have the funding option talked about. We've been talking about this now going on 16 months after a six-month trend up, so we actually have almost 19, I guess six and 16 would be 22, months of that trend now. And it is the first time since 2005 budget discussions, when Mayor Jordan was Alderman at the time, and I was also, with the last request from public safety from the chiefs publicly for headcount. So we've hit the 10-year threshold and a significant population change as the fastest-growing municipality in the state of Arkansas during that period.
Yes, Alan.
And I'd like to add to that, because Alderwoman Adams and I did last year sponsor, co-sponsor a resolution to ask the administration to study the impact of our growing population compared to our police force. And when we looked at that, Fayetteville had a median crime rate and one of the lower number of police officers per capita out of the 10 largest peer cities in the state of Arkansas. The data wasn't there to support the increase at that time, but the police chief told me, and I know that he told Alderwoman Adams...
And sent a letter to you all saying I would do that.
Through the city clerk, saying that if there was a time and after the data had been collected, that you would do exactly what you're asking for now. So I appreciate you doing that, because it shows that our police chief, our fire chief, and our administration keep public safety as their top priority. Thank you very much.
You know, folks, there's few politicians that run on, "I'm going to raise your taxes" platform.
Yeah.
But there becomes a time when there's need. Now, we studied this, we, and we made a commitment in a letter that I sent all of you, now, John, you were on the council then, but I did send a letter to all of you that we would be reviewing this. And if there was a need did arise, we would, I would bring it to you immediately. Now, the police chief and the fire chief came in and said, "We have a need. Now, your priority one calls have gone up about 20% in the last year." Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And your overall calls have gone up about 10% in the last year. Now, we've managed to get along without raising any taxes and make it happen, but the top priority of any administration is to keep a city safe. That's my job, honestly, it's the job of the council as well. Now, I don't like raising taxes anymore than, I mean, this guy sitting here will tell you, I'm just not a real, "I like raising your taxes" kind of elected official, but there comes a time where there's a need and you have to keep the city safe. And I'm going to do my best to keep this city safe. Police chief, I meet with him every month. If they didn't need it, they would... If they didn't need it, they wouldn't have asked. And if they hadn't asked, I wouldn't be asking. And that's what we're going to do. And I don't know what else to tell you. You either believe that, or you don't believe it. That's up to y'all. So, you vote, and vote well. Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Thank you all. All right. Does anybody want a break?
Yes.
2:30, I need a break. I'd like to call the city council meeting back to order. Uh, let's see. Number one, a new business. We're there. A resolution-
Here we go.
A resolution, moving right along.
8:30.
All right. A resolution to authorize the purchase of a rotary lift system from Navholtz of Bixby, Oklahoma, in the amount of $45,990.85, plus applicable taxes pursuant to a national joint powers alliance to offer purchasing agreement for use by Fleet Operations. Stat? Jesse? Do you have that?
State mayor, council. The, this four-post lift is for the Fleet Operations Division. We have, currently have one large lift in our shop. It's a parallelogram lift. I don't know, if y'all know about that. But it takes up the entire bay. It's either in use, which is a lot, if it's not in use, the entire bay is almost useless. These lifts we're attempting to purchase will greatly benefit our operation. They're portable, they can be moved if we don't happen to need them. Our use is gone now, but we do need them quite a bit. And we can move them out of the way and still have operation.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jesse on this? Alan?
I'd just like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second.
Okay. All right. What discussion do we have? Okay. Any public comments on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. Now, we have a motion to second. What final comments do we have in the council? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, a resolution award bid number 15-47 to authorize the purchase of a Peterbilt 320 diesel truck with LaBree and Whitkey, I hope I did that correctly, Super Duty front loader from Peterbilt of Fort Smith, in the amount of $243,520 for use by the recycling and trash collection division.
Yes, sir. Mayor, this is a 2006 truck that has been needing replacement. It was scheduled for replacement in 2013. We now have basically used it up. It's still usable. It is a spare unit. We need to get it replaced and get a frontline unit out there where we can continue our services to the citizens.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jesse on this? Has, and these haven't gone through the, I'm sorry, John, these haven't gone through the equipment?
They have.
They have gone through the equipment?
They have.
Okay.
Tell me again, why do we need this new, is this a recycling truck?
No, sir. This is a front-load refuse truck. This picks up the containers, the businesses, and the commercial accounts.
How many of these trucks do we have right now?
We have seven total.
Okay. And they're wearing out?
We have, we rotate them throughout their life, so we keep newer units, and we don't replace them all at one time, so it's an ongoing process.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been through the equipment committee.
Yes.
He's on the equipment committee anyway, I'm sorry.
Myself, Matthew.
You and Matthew and-
I'm on, I'm on the equipment committee.
Did you have questions about it?
I just asked.
Okay. I mean, though, on the equipment committee.
I don't remember what we discussed in the equipment committee, Mayor.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, do we have any public comment on it? I'll bring it back to the council.
We'll pass the resolution.
Second.
A motion to second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Latere?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?